Follow the order, the February twenty eighth meeting of the lowest Alfred Planning Commission. Uh, first item on the agenda is motion for the approval of the minutes from the January meeting. Everybody have a chance to take all of them. Any changes issued? Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, eight, second, five. Go. Uh, we have a motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
May we?
Aye.
Close? Any extensions? Okay. All right, next item, standard review is one ninety-six Main Street revised conditional use application.
Do you think? Um, Rick Bass, the engineer prepared the plan and Brian Hansberger, Rio or Lasty, uh, the applicants are with me tonight. And, uh, we did review this, uh, to some degree last month as well, and, um, between last month and this month, we received, uh, county review. Actually, we already had the county review and, um, um, township engineers review, so, uh, just to refresh your memory, uh, from what was originally submitted, um, till now, um, the retail building was originally proposed as an auto zone, is no longer an auto zone, it's just a general retail building, uh, for rent. Uh, the smaller building, uh, at the corner is and always has been a Chase Bank, um. It's configured with a drive-through, we treated it in terms of the zoning ordinance as if it was a drive-through, it's, it is not a full-service teller drive-through, it's a drive-up ATM, basically. Um, but it does meet the drive-through standards. And then the other four buildings are, uh, apartments, um, and, uh, that is a revision from what was originally proposed, we had driveways and garages into the apartment units, um, did end up with a lot of, um, paving in front of the unit, so to some degree, I think that is, uh, an enhancement to the way the plan looks, um, the units are a little smaller than originally proposed, and they are all two-story units, there are no longer any three-story units. Um, the other thing that is changing or changed is, there's this, there's a drainage feature that runs diagonally through the property, it is not a regulated channel in terms of, uh, DEP, does not have wetlands or waters of the Commonwealth. Uh, and it's not a FEMA flood plain, but there is alluvial soil, so we are no longer proposing any buildings, uh, within that area. Um, the other thing that is significant is a public hearing was held, uh, I believe it's the beginning of February, and, uh, the proposed zoning text amendments for the Aura District and also some other districts in the township uh, were approved, so that kind of resolved a few zoning issues with the access configuration uh, and, uh, the bank, which was not as specifically allowed use, it is now the ordinance amendments that took place. So the latest review from K S, which is dated February thirteenth, uh, does factor that in, and uh, there's a couple of zoning comments, and I would call them fairly insignificant, um, and I'll just, I'll just go through the ones where that we need to discuss, most of them are just indications that we comply. Um, we are, and we've done this with the other conditional use in the area, Main and Point, for example, which had several conditional uses. The landscaping and lighting plan does have specific requirements, we intend on meeting them, we're not looking for any uh, relief in terms of the conditional use requirements, but we still have an entire land development procedure to go to through. And that impacts, you know, the stormwater management, the grading, and the landscaping and lighting sort of go hand-in-hand with all that, so we would agree to a condition, but just say we need to comply with the conditional use requirements during the land development process. Um, comment number five on page three, there are a few comments about Chase Bank, and it's, uh, IB two. And it's talking about, um, the residential materials to be used. Um, the rendering that was originally submitted, some of the materials, I think you could argue, are not residential, so if you could put up the black and white, um, just re- rendering. I do go back to Chase with those comments. And they, they will revise the building materials, um, not that one. There's a, a black and white, well, there should have been two of them. That's the original one that you're looking for. Um, so wherever you see the darker shading, where Mike's arrow is, that's all going to be a stone veneer similar to the other buildings that are proposed on this complex, but also what's across the street, uh, at Main and Point. And then the other building material, um, the, the lighter shading, I'll, I'll call it, is now going to be, um, a lapped, uh, cement board siding. So there will not be any, um, like a split face block look or anything like that, so I think that satisfies the, um, the residential building material requirement, and also kind of coordinates it better with the other uses that are proposed on this property, but also across the street. The roof materials, uh, and they do meet the slope requirements, will need to be added to the plan, turn to the label. Uh, but they'll all be standing seam metal roofs, um, the other change that is different that from what was originally submitted and was commented is, we've reduced the windows, uh, on the side facades to be quote, more residential in scale, the original um, rendering that was provided had larger windows all the way around, so they've been reduced, try to, try to, uh, be more residential in character, so we think with those revisions that, uh, the comments have been addressed, and it's in keeping with the conditional use requirements for the proposed use. Questions?
On the, um, the apartment building that, um, abuts Quarry Road, the one closest to Quarry Road, give the elevation of that side that it busts the road.
The side of the building?
The part that will be seen directly from the road.
Uh, we do not have that side on a render, we had the front facades. So I don't know, he probably produced something.
Guess the only unit where, what people will see the most, that is the side of that building.
Right. The, uh, and Mike, if you look at the other rendering as well. That's a rendering of the proposed retail building. Yeah, oh, that's the apartments. Yeah. Um, so, uh, just while we're on that, the, the stone material that's used will intent is to match the, among the three buildings on the site, or three types of buildings on the site. Obviously with that, there's an attempt to have a variety of materials and fenestrations all at the front. That's the retail building, um, so slope roofs, intersecting roof lines, uh, trying to give it some interest, um, beyond just its basic shape, uh. So again, we, we believe that complies with with the ordinance. That facade we're looking at would be the facade that faces the Chase Bank.
Where would the retail signage on the side go for each individual store?
It would go along that facade, anywhere on the building.
Yeah.
On some. Or maybe even on the points.
This is the first, I'm right here.
Now, and I'll reiterate what Julie can tell, the street-facing side, we don't have the rendering of. Correct, the left side faces Summietown Pike as you're looking at this, and, and that definitely will have a similar appearance, it's got the roof on, so we can, we can provide that, but the intent is, that's not a blank wall by any means. Tended to be similar.
Okay.
The, um, apartment buildings that you have the other rendering for? Um, personally, I like this a lot, but the apartment buildings, um, you use a lot of different materials to separate the different units to give it some character, which is nice, because that doesn't work unless there are offsets. If they're just up against each other, it looks not great.
There, if you look at that, there still are offsets in materials, there's roof lines, there's, um, some cantilever awnings, or not awnings, uh, bay windows, things like that, if you pull that. So.
You have an exact mix of, um, material types. But when they're not more bumped back from one another.
The depth, in our opinion, the depth in the facade is going to be created by the intersecting roof lines, those gable, um, roofs that you see from here will have depth to them, because they have to, the gable end is going to be vertical, it has to get back to where the rest of the sloped roof is, so there will be a, a three-third dimension to that entire building. And then the little roofs, um, you see along the front, they project out from the walls, there's, because they're different facades, they're stone, they're siding, there's also going to be some offset in that way, so, you know, I do think they provide some of that character.
Subject of break, which I, I agree, I think there should be some breaks in this design too. But also, um, uh, horizontal breaks, um, I think would probably be appropriate on the site, because it is sloping down a little bit, and as if that ridge line going across the entire building will be fairly brutal, even just having a little bit of break. I, I think that's one difference, when we have the, the townhouse layout, you could see it stepping down. And this is, this is not doing the same thing.
The, there's four buildings proposed, um, the building that is closest to Quarry Road, definitely because of the grade, will have vertical breaks, um. In fact, it has four vertical buildings along it, uh, that's the building to the far left, closest to Quarry Road.
Okay.
So that definitely will have vertical breaks, the other three um, do not need a vertical break, but I think at least for the two, uh, the two longer buildings, uh, that could be created one, one vertical separation.
How, how long are?
Those two are a hundred and fifty feet. The others are a hundred and twenty feet.
Yeah, Rick, I think for those that, that go along the adjacent property line, I mean, they're going to be pretty visible to folks coming up Summietown, uh, hitting west, I, I think we, we'd like to see that vertical ridge line broken up, and I think the topography supports it, because I think it does slope away from Summietown going down along Quarry, so I, I don't think it'll be that hard. I, I understand your point about the front having enough visual components, the back really does not, so, you know, I, I know you're kind of right up against a, a property line there, um, but, you know, can we, even just a one or two-foot offset every two or three units is going to break that up a bit. Um, so I think we'd want to see what that looks like with the vertical step-down, and then if that accomplishes it, great, if not, then, then, you know, what can we do to create some offsets? And then, then last thought for you is, you know, your, your commercial building, I think is, is a pretty decent-looking building, and I think, you know, as we've seen different developments come in over time, including, you know, the parcel across the street, having a consistent color palette, actually, I think, is, is probably more appealing over time, your, your rendering looks nice, but I, I don't know how those colors are going to hold up over time, and, and I think maybe just going with a single color palette of, you know, whatever, you know, three or four colors constitute the palette for that development, I think would probably look more appropriate.
Yeah, there, there was a little bit of concern that when you take, when you, when you look at the rendering, and then you take and you translate aerial, you're, you're either going to get colors that are really far off, um, you know, or it, or there just won't be any contrast at all, so I, I think that it probably does make sense to simplify the, the color palette a little bit. Um, I do have a couple of questions about the plan, so, um, first of all, I, on, on the on the plan, if, if these drive-through buildings to be a bank, why does it have a dumpster? And, and as a follow-up to that, why is that in the notes label that it's a retail building?
It, it's not a restaurant.
Okay, well, on the bank, under parking data, it is listed as.
Correct that then. At, at one time, the first time we came in, it was a restaurant.
Right.
So that's, that's a leftover note that.
Just thinking of the TD Bank just uses a very small, they shred everything and they just eat small food.
Yeah, I mean, we would not be opposed to getting rid of the dumpster, however, uh, Chase Bank does have a dumpster detail and requirements, that was, that was there on their, or device, so we can talk to them about maybe reducing it in size, if it's more than they need. But that's what we've been told.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that, that you weren't sneaking in a restaurant.
I'm not sure how we could do it, but no.
Okay, another comment, um, in front of the, I guess it's actually on the side of the retail building, the bigger retail building, um, the parking spaces that are directly across from Herb Cut, like, in my opinion, those really don't. They're, they're right there at the entrance, coming in off of sixty-three, also, if if the, um, uh, easement is utilized to the next property in the future, then it will even be worse situation, because there's this molding. You know, it's, it's basically an accident waiting to happen with people backing up, coming in. I, I do notice that you're actually a little bit over than your parking count, so either if they could be eliminated or moved, I think that would probably be a little bit safer. It also would provide an area for a little bit of landscaping, it's some visual sort of buffering in the first term in there.
We can, uh, I guess we can discuss that, um, we do have extra parking, so we could get rid of those three where the cursor is without sacrificing, you know, a zoning requirement for parking.
I, I think we were looking at five maybe, Rick, if you do five, that actually gets you back to the same spot where you're mirrored on both the left and the right as you come in, and it creates a nice soft curve plus a spot for you to do some landscaping.
Like four or five.
I, I think we can work something out, yeah, that's acceptable, uh, parking, even, you know, though it may meet the zoning requirement, certainly for a retail establishment, it's it's an important component to making the building desirable, leasable, and functional, so um, not every parking spot, obviously, on every site is ideal, and usually you relegate those to staff, uh, things like that, so that they're not used by the public. But yeah, I think we can at least accommodate a part of that.
You can move the dumpster or whatever.
I just took a quick look, just, um, I'm, I'm doing a chase deal somewhere else, and I just pulled up plan and no dumpster.
There's no dumpster.
When you mentioned it.
Yeah.
Mentioned it.
I would ask.
Back to them and ask.
I would.
I mean, I'll cut down on your verbiage service.
No, no, it's a question, um, it was, was part of the package that they submitted to us to put on the point, so, yeah. It's worth asking.
Are, are you planning on, uh, um, any kind of signage, uh, other than on the buildings, like a monument sign or?
We would have a monument sign, um, uh, at least on Summietown Pike, maybe on both entrances, if we're able to. What can we decide? For that.
I'm giving some thought to extending the park, the, uh, sidewalk up to the sidewalk on Quarry, one in front of that first building for the.
We do plan to do that. We discussed that last month, actually, so yes, we plan to connect that, that as a county planning.
Ben, you have any other comments?
No, I think that covers most of what we, uh, we're trying to think through here. I think the, the, we can deal with it in land development, Rick, but visually, there's going to be a lot of, uh, you know, the, the parking that's between the bank and the retail building, um, you know, that, that's going to be fairly visible to the folks that are sitting at the traffic light on Quarry Road. We, we probably will just want to understand what the landscaping looks like along that side there. I understand you don't want to block the sightline of the signs of the building, but I, I think, you know, four or five feet of buffering that takes away the impact of the cars and the parking, something we'll want to talk about in land development.
Okay.
Yeah. So there, there's still, there, there's still a few items which I think probably we want to see, and we definitely want to see the architecture on the um, end of the retail building facing, uh, Summietown, and maybe just the, the few items on the plan that we're talking about. I think the, just, I think this is a case where we like what's been done across the street, but we want to make sure that it's tied to that very closely. So the only way to really do that is to produce the documents that we can absolutely refer to in the condition I use here, or condition he's prosperous, um. The, the only other question I would ask, the, oh, I, I do have one other question, um, with the, with the units, the apartment units, um, what is the bedroom distribution?
Two bedroom, two man.
So there's no three-bedroom units?
No.
Would you be willing to accept the condition in the future that there be no three-bedroom units? Okay.
Why do you have that jump?
Why do I have to say that? Because it could potentially change the, the way the parking works, um, also, many.
Cause of larger families, I think.
Yeah, and, and it, it cuts down on the potential for school-aged children, things like that, um. But many of the, uh, conditional uses that we've been working on recently for instance, in Lansdale, we're, we're really trying to tighten down the description as much as possible in terms of the the conditions and the approval. In some cases, it's appropriate to, you know, somebody would, would agree to limiting three bedrooms, it would be powerful.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think if you could probably make the few changes to the, uh, plan and bring in the additional architecture, and I, I would really urge you to consist, to consider the horizontal breaks in the in the apartment.
So we can do that, my uh, request respectfully would be to consider a recommendation just for the conditional use. Definitely are up against some strict timing concerns, uh, this conditional use application was originally filed in, in May. Um, and at the earliest, even if we had received that recommendation, the hearing could be, would be April. Um, we're already past the deadline for the planning commission next month, so I don't know what that means in terms of which planning commission we would be at. But if it goes to May, we'd be looking at a hearing in June, thirteen months after we submitted, which at this point is probably not going to work in terms of.
John, I agree with Rick on that, I mean, I think they've heard from us, uh, I don't know that needs to slow up any anymore, just to see the stuff that we talked about today, we'll still need to see it.
Still need to see it.
Yeah, but I think the problem is, is that, you know, we, we've raised a couple of concerns that, that we've tried to talk about at the township, and I think the applicant's response was they'll think about it, so I guess we have to give them time to go think about it and find out where they land.
I'll find if we, um, I think we'd probably meet you halfway in the sense that, um, since this is an ongoing application, might, um, I'm not sure that it makes sense to to strictly enforce the deadline for submission of revised material.
Yeah, I don't know how much, how much of the plan is actually going to change anyway, so I think what we're going to be seeing is is are more elevations.
Yeah, probably, really, it's mostly, it's mostly just that. So i- is it that difficult to get some elevations turned around? I mean, if, if the hearing timing is, is off until April anyway, then it wouldn't matter.
Again.
Yeah, anything I'm concerned about is the board may not want to authorize the advertisement of the hearing, so the planning commission recommends approval, so that may will be in at least May at that point, I believe, unless they'd be willing to to do it in, I, I guess, yeah, see, the March meeting would be, would be passed at that point. We'd be at March planning commission, and then the March supervisors. I mean, April supervisors, May hearing, I think.
Yeah, that, that I can't answer, although I could, you know, I think we should encourage them to at least go ahead and advertise the, the hearing date. I do think that it's important that we know that.
So that is something that would work for us, if that's agreeable, you know, if we could get it, we could request the board to maybe consider authorizing the hearing, um, knowing that we will come back to the planning commission before the hearing.
Yeah.
So, you know, that doesn't, um, interrupt our timing as much, and I realize these are applicant issues, not county issues, but they're important issues, that's the same.
No, they are, with the condition I use, this is really all we have, it's our one ship, nail down these, these certain specific items. And I do think that they are important. I know they're important to the board. They're, they're important to the numbers here.
Okay.
So if we could do that, and I, I think we can allow some leeway with the issue of, of, you know, revised.
The art of nature.
Because I, I agree, the plan's not really going to change much yet. Maybe with the parking arrangements, see if you can tweak the parking near the entrance, uh, and then the rest is just, for the most part, elevations, and then maybe inquire with, with Chase's above the, um, dumpster. The only other thing that I will ask is, I may as well ask you this now, if you would be willing to accept the condition that uh, the area north of the drainage way can never be the residential. The area, in other words, the, the, I won't call it a stream, but the drainage area, the area to the north, and that's between the drainage area and sixty-three, that that area can never be frozen.
Signing on going out, we're hoping to get a Chase Bank.
That, that, um, no, the only, the only reason why, Brian, is I've gone through the ordinance, there actually is no real density requirement. So we don't want this to keep growing and growing and growing. Uh, we're already growing from, I think, twenty-nine units to thirty-six units. So I, I know some members of the board have expressed concern, and that would be an easy way to kind of break it into two areas, one that would be for residential, one that would be for commercial.
So this is, this is what we're looking to get approved.
Okay. And, and because we're not making a formal recommendation, I mean, you can still think about it. We just wanted.
Yeah, my only comment on that, and, yeah, discuss it further, is you never know what's going to happen in the future, there's plans, but what if in the future, there's no commercial market there, for some reason, whatever that may be, now you've strangled the property.
Well, no, it's going to come back down.
But it's, it's completely discretionary rather than a zoning requirement, because it really supersedes a current agreement that would supersede zoning at that point. I don't know, I'm just throwing out my two cents. I think that. Yeah, that's gonna be in perpetuity for the remainder of the life of the property. Do you really want that restriction on that property, not knowing what's gonna happen? Twenty, thirty years from now. Might be the desire to have a residential someday, things change.
Well, I, no, I agree with you. It would be there um for a long period, but I I think. It also is a way that we can impose the limit on. On what can be developed there. If this were under MU. It would have a, you know, formula as to what. Has to be residential, what has to be non-residential. This this is actually pretty open. So, and I I. I looked through the code thoroughly, and I just thought that this would be a simple way to. To impose that kind of control.
Considerate, I guess.
We talked to the ultimate. We got seven more years on on the one side.
Well, that's, I guess that's not necessarily the issue. It's just the fact that uh. You know, that just runs forever with the land uh and nobody knows. That's what zoning's for, really. I mean, that's zoning is supposed to. Determine the the intensity and the uses that are allowed, not. Not other agreements.
It it's supposed to, but in this case, I don't know that it works. Alright. Alright, so if you can get that that back in uh St. Paul's and. Uh, next month, we can make our recommendation and keep things moving.
I like that because it's not a whole lot of work for me, so.
Yeah, I don't I don't think it'll take.
So. To. Saying that you will. Break it, make, please make a recommendation and authorize advertising for the for the uh.
Um, well, we'll we'll put it on the record. I don't think we need to take a vote, but I think everybody. Uh, I think that yes, we would recommend that the. Uh, the board move forward with scheduling and hearing their next meeting, I think it's getting up for April. You go with that, Manus?
Yeah, I have no issue with that, John. I mean, I think, you know, presumably there's a small number of uh items to get resolved here. And either they will or they won't, and that'll lead to the recommendation next month. So I I. Completely support keeping the process moving.
Okay.
And then we'll we'll be back at the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda. Walkable letter at feasibility study. Natasha here. Guide us through this.
Good evening, I'm Natasha Mandak with Bowman. Um, and I was the, I'm the project manager for the walkable letter app feasibility study. And I'm joined this evening by my colleague Stephanie Butler, who's on Zoom, and she has been involved uh throughout the project as well. So the purpose tonight is to provide a brief overview of the walkable letter app feasibility study draft report. Which is currently available on the township's website for public comment and review. We are accepting written public comments through March eleventh. So I encourage anyone, um, what you'll see tonight is just a taste of the full draft report. Um, so I encourage everyone to go home. Curl up. And read the full report and submit written comments before March eleventh. Um, I believe several people um have attended previous public meetings and workshops that we've had. So some of this information should look a look a little bit familiar. Uh, next slide. So the village of Letterac uh was once farmland. And it really developed around the six-point intersection, which is what it's still well-known for today. Um, and. Next slide. Um. Many things in the village are the same as what they were back in the early eighteen hundreds. Um, but some things have changed. The six-legged intersection. Second, the six-legged intersection is still the heart of the village, but it now has a traffic signal. The, there are several historic buildings which um have been preserved, but now have new uses. Um, the historic character creates kind of some tight spaces. And instead of horse and buggies, we have about ten thousand vehicles traveling and trucks, cars and trucks traveling up and down on Route one thirteen. So, next slide. Lower Salford Township initiated this study to plan for the future of the village. And the purpose was to develop and evaluate ways to make the village more walkable. Provide regional bicycle and pedestrian connections and do that while retaining and promoting the village character. All of that while balancing the need for traffic um circulation. The township received grant funding through the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. And Bowman was selected as the prime consultant, and we were joined by NTM. Who did an environmental um screening. Tonight is the culmination of an over one-year-long planning process. We started by evaluating existing conditions, including previous plans, looking at collecting traffic data and now analyzing it. Looking at crash data and conducting a field visit. Uh, we facilitated a number of um opportunities for stakeholder inputs. And identify evaluated options for improving the village core gateways and edge. That was the focus of public meeting number one, which was held last June. Slide. We then took feedback and developed more detailed concepts. Those were presented at public workshop number two in November. And we now have the draft report that kind of summarizes all of the work that's available for public review and comment. Once we receive the public comments, we will be address incorporating them and addressing any comments that require addressing. And preparing a final report um by the end of March. Public input has really been the foundation of this plan. And we held, as I mentioned, two public workshops. We had four steering committee meetings. We held two stakeholder meetings plus additional um outreach with stakeholders. Uh, technical coordination meeting with PENDOT and Montgomery County Planning Commission. Had an online survey, kind of an opportunity for people to provide input after the first public workshop. And throughout have had materials available online. We tried to document how the public input and feedback was you was heard, what was heard, and how it informed the plan. Throughout the draft report, you'll see what we heard, boxes like the one on this slide. Um, and that's where one of the places we documented that input, as well as there's a full technical appendix. That lists all the public comments that we received. One of the questions we received throughout the planning process, well, what happens when this report is complete? And um, the report identifies both capital improvement projects. As well as potential policies that could be updated and or partnerships and other ways. To help achieve the overall vision um through policy changes. Um, I will note that any capital improvement project, this is a a feasibility study. So we've identified some concepts, but any capital improvement will require additional engineering. Um, that will include permitting, additional coordination with property owners, utility coordination. There's a lot more steps before anything would get constructed. And all of the implementation really is dependent upon funding, resources, and community input ongoing. Next slide. The vision for the village is um a sustained. Uh, that the village is sustained as a bucolic and walkable village that reflects its historic character. Fosters a sense of community, embraces small and local businesses. And provides safe connections for bicyclists, pedestrians, and motorists. The goals include enhancing connectivity, manage traffic congestion in high speeds, retaining the character. Supporting a mix of uses and enhancing and connecting to open spaces. Those goals then fed into some of the key considerations that we evaluated as part of the planning. Next slide. For over forty years, um, the concept of a bypass for one thirteen and uh the village of Letterac. Has been um discussed and advanced. The township has secured a significant portion of the right-of-way for the planned one thirteen alternate route. And the township is continuing to pursue grant funding to advance design and construction of the one thirteen alternate route. So part of this project was to think about the future for the village of Letterac. Both in the nearer term, um, as well as in the longer term. If and when the one thirteen alternate route is built, what opportunities or how that might change. Um, the circumstances for the village. So as part of the first public meeting, we asked people how would relocating one thirteen affect your community? I will say this is, this was a much discussed topic, but throughout the project. At the first public meeting, we heard about fifty-fifty. Half of the people. Said it should have been done forty years ago, and I don't understand why it's not done now. And half of the people said it should never be done. Um, so there are very differing opinions as it relates to one thirteen alternate route. We did look at some options of making Harleysville Pike one way. That's one place where people had complete consensus. No one liked the idea of um one of Harleysville Pike having one-way operations. So, next slide. Based on the feedback we received. We included in the report some outcomes and considerations for the township. As plans continue to move forward for the one thirteen alternate route. One of those is to consider keeping Harleysville Pike designated and signed as one thirteen. There are a lot of concerns, particularly from the business community, um, about if you. Change the designation, um, that it would be detrimental to um. Retaining local businesses within the village. Um, we also are referring to it as the one thirteen um alternate route instead of the relocation for that reason. Um. The concept plan for the one thirteen alternate route does include a trail. That is one concept that many people liked, so possibly advancing the trail connection in advance of the roadway. And seeing that as a first phase. Um, we identified the need to really look closer at the road design, particularly for the northern and southern ends. And how the one thirteen alternate route and Harleysville Pike, those connections and how those connections would be made. Dismissing one-way scenarios, don't consider those any further. Uh, continuing to pursue grant funding, and I think one of the important things for this project was. To try to focus on improvements for the village that aren't dependent on the implementation of the one thirteen alternate routes. Since that maybe a long time off may never come to fruition, so we kind of tried to focus on things that weren't dependent upon that. Next slide. For the purpose of the study, we looked at kind of three different um perspectives or or areas. First, the village core, um, really in the heart of the village at the six-point intersection, then the gateways. Um, how people enter and exit the um village, and lastly, the edge. And for the edge, we focused more on the bicycle and pedestrian connectivity in and around the village. So the next part of my presentation, we're gonna look closer at the um. Potential improvements for the core, then the gateways, and then the edge. Next slide. So this is a, the conceptual plan for improvements within the village core. You'll see um potential additional sidewalks and crosswalks. Um, some things aren't captured on the concept plan, but are documented in the report, which includes. Um, some additional landscaping and also options to potentially relocate the existing traffic signal. Um, hole in different configurations. Um, I will draw your attention, I think, one specific area of the concept plan that received more. Um, positive feedback was in front of the Bay Pony Inn. Um, and actually, if you go to the next slide. You'll see the beautiful concrete island that was constructed as part of the traffic signal in front of the Bay Pony Inn. So one of the concepts was how to beautify um and kind of repurpose. Maybe remove and repurpose that area so that it could be a sidewalk with some nice landscaping. I connect to a crosswalk that um goes across Old Skipback Pike. And make some of those internal connections. So on the right is a potential rendering that shows some of. Um, the concept plans and what it could look like. Next slide. The plan includes um. Kind of how the, how the concept, that overall concept could be implemented in a phased approach over time. So all of the sidewalk connections and crosswalks could not be implemented up necessarily at once. The idea is to break it into separate uh capital improvement projects. And so we've identified um about eight different capital improvements. And have provided some prioritization for, potential prioritization for those projects within the draft report. Um, for the village core, that C one, which is the old Skipback Pike Bay Pony Inn, is identified as one of those priority. Potential priority improvements. Next slide. For the gateways, gateways, we identified five potential locations to create gateways. That will alert motorists that they are either entering or exiting the village, help to calm traffic. And provide some beautification and identity for the village. For um one thirteen, both north and south and crossroads. Those corridors have a little bit higher traffic volumes and also a little bit more space. So we identified the potential of providing a median as part of the gateway treatment. For Salfordville Road and Morris Road, they're more constrained, and so the concept is for a roadside gateway. Next slide. We developed concept plans for both the a median and a roadside. This one is shown for one thirteen south. But the concepts could be um. Replicated or provided in any of the median gateways. It includes, one of the things I want to point out, we've identified that the. Speed limit signage is not always clear and consistent. So part of creating the gateways could be an opportunity. To coordinate with PENDOT on state-owned roadways and look at potentially making the speed limits appropriate. For a village setting and making the signage uh for those speed limits clear. Um, in addition to speed limit, this could um include a welcome to Letterac or some other type of gateway sign. You'll see the median feature. One of the other concepts was to provide stamped asphalt as a visual cue. Um, and an aesthetic treatment, and that is a concept that's carried into the roadside gateways. This shows just the concept of some um roadside plantings. Possibly um low, slow-growing to maintain new sheds. That was a comment we received at our second public meeting. Next slide. This shows a roadside rate rendering. This one again is for Salfordville, but could be applied for Morris. And you'll see, one of the concepts is to have some consistency in terms of materials. That's important for the aesthetic treatment as well as for ongoing maintenance. So the stamped asphalt treatment is consistent, some roadside plantings, the speed limit sign. Um, and we also identified the potential for um either hedgerow or fence or knee wall or some type of other linear treatment. Next slide. For the village edge, we identified eleven potential. For the village edge, we identified eleven potential connections. And I will say some of them are near-term. For example, um number E two is Lucon Road Bike Lanes, and the township recently received Arlie funding to strike eleven-foot travel lanes and provide wider shoulders and share the road signs along Lucon. Um, some of them, some of the potential connections will require additional evaluation um and property owner coordination. Um, in addition, we identify bigger regional picture um connect, potential connections, such as a future connection to um the Perkyomen Trail as well as Avonberg State Park. Next slide. So beyond the capital improvements, the plan includes um the recommendation for other plans, policy updates, and partnerships. So for the village core, the one concept is to develop design guidelines for the village. And one of the things the committee discussed was that those guidelines maybe could be developed for uh the villages within the township, not just Letterak. And that is something that I think could, is something the planning commission um could take up. Um, cut-through traffic is an issue, and so we identified some potential strategies and the need to partner with property owners to potentially address some of the cut-through traffic issues. Um, the Township Sidewalk and Trails Committee served as the steering committee for this project. And so many of the village edge um potential in connections can be considered as the sidewalk committee moves forward with their overall um sidewalk and trail planning for the township. And last, but definitely not least, is the need that for, as anything moves forward, whether it's developing design guidelines or capital improvements, the importance of continuing to coordinate with the property owners, the business owners, and the residents. They, as from the um participation that we've received at the public workshops, they are very interested and obviously invested in their community, and they want to be part of the plans going forward. Next slide. At our last public meeting, we did ask about um priorities and, you know, if um, how would people invest, how would residents invest in the future of Letterak? Based on um some of the concepts that we presented. And the majority of people want to prioritize improvements in the edge, those bicycle and connect, pedestrian connections in and around the village and connecting to the existing um sidewalk and trail network. Um, secondly, um was, we, we have a whole category for other, but kind of second to that was, I think, the village gateways. We did receive comments, uh particularly at the second public meeting, of not supporting making Letterak walkable. Um, and suggesting the best thing to do is nothing, and that doing anything is a waste of money. So those were sentiments um that were received and are documented before. Next slide. So the draft report, as I mentioned, is available on the township's website. We are accepting public um written comments through March eleventh, and then we will be preparing a final report. That will be um presented at, for acceptance at the Board of Supervisors meeting. We are targeting our April third meeting, and I'll clarify to say that acceptance is confirming that the final report um completed the scope of work and fulfilled the contract requirements. It is not an adoption process. Um, so, I will turn it to.
Anybody have any comments or questions? A lot of material.
Very impressive.
We, we've been working on it for a long time in the trail and sidewalk.
How many, how many people commented like, when the graphs showed it? You know about approximately how many comments got to the public?
Um, those those were from the second public meeting. Generally, we had, I think, about fifty people at the second public meeting. We had well over eighty people at the first public meeting. The second public meeting, I can't confirm that all fifty of those people provided, um, we did a bus exercise. So, I'm actually have the, so here. We asked people, we gave them um each a buck and asked them what, how um they would spend it. Village Core, Village Gateway, or Village Edge. Um, and so these are the responses that we got.
Are you getting written responses to the draft?
Um, we have not received a written response yet on the draft. Everybody still?
We did receive, I will say, we did receive written comments emailed after the second public meeting as well. Um, a number of emails either came into the township or were um sent directly to us as well. So, yeah, there was people that viewed it, read it, went back home, thought about it, and then provided their feedback, so um I just wanted to mention that as well.
Here's a link.
Um, pretty good. For a, for a chat with, um. It's gotten filed into mail by this, uh it didn't really emphasize what it was gonna be. Um, I reviewed it online and it's, it's a numerous amount of pages. More than any long-time community citizen would want to go through, I'm sure. Uh, I've heard different things about this from people for and against. Some people still think that one thirteen is still gonna be one-way, that's where they left off on some of these plans. Um, most of them that I've talked to said the meetings were a little busy, like a lot of people were gun-ho for this, and they didn't really have a lot of opportunity to be able to say, what is this that you're doing to our community kind of thing? There are people that don't even know about it, in Lettermark, believe it or not. Um. So I will, I'm already currently on a, a bunch of emails and texts. Something on Facebook as far as another property that I'm trying to save, but I at least have a reach for some of these people, and I'll try to get them. I'm surprised this was on the agenda, but some of them have not been here. You're gonna get a lot of push and it's gonna be back and forth, I'm sure. Uh, I know you're trying to make this like the, the skip act or something, is that what we're trying to do? I don't know what, no.
No, we're trying, we're trying to just support Letterak. We. It don't want it.
Um, I don't, I don't get it.
And you're not alone, you will say, I think in the report, we documented, we did hear a wide range of opinions. Um, we received that feedback at the meetings and in other ways that people were able to provide feedback. Um, and I think and I hope that that feedback is documented within the report, that not everyone was supportive of the concept. And part of what we tried to do is present priorities at the end of the things that people, that was more. But yeah, we heard people say, why would you walk with that? And then we had other people say, I want to be able to walk, I used to walk, and they don't anymore because of the trap. So, and that's a beautiful township, great new shape. Trail and park. But still have a bunch of new townhouses being. It's growing and it's not growing in a wonderful way, um but you're gonna get that in any neighborhood. It's not like it used to be. Um, a lot of them felt that it was a done deal when they were at these meetings. They felt there's more push to go with it, and the backers for it, it's already done. Um, they feel like a minority in the whole thing, so I don't know. You keep saying that this is not a done deal, this is still more plans to be made, so I'll try to spread the word for that, but um I'm not getting a lot of positivities where it's even wanting to give you feedback, because it just feels like it's already been planned and everything's, so. That's the atmosphere they felt at the meetings. You know. Presentations at least, so I'm just kind of giving you a, an idea of what did anticipate and why maybe you're from a lot of people, but. I guess, I guess the township did an excellent job. I work on similar types of plans from municipalities across Pennsylvania, and Lower Safford is one of the few municipalities that actually sent meeting notices in the mail to residents within, I forget what radius we use, Stephanie.
Well, it was a mile, it was hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of letters and notices for every every event or every posting to the website and the public meetings. So they were, they were very adamant that we make sure that the message was delivered to the community in and around the village.
That area. Long-term residents are in there. We had, we had a wide range of the, the people who came to the meeting. I talked to people who had just bought out their, and had no idea that one thirteen was planned to be relocated. And I had other people who said, I've been here for fifty years. People in the audience who say has been here longer than fifty, but, um.
I think Natasha, I would just like to add too that this is a feasibility study. This is not saying the twenty projects that are listed are going to be constructed tomorrow. There, there are potential ideas, there, there are potential projects that could be further, furthered along if that's chosen by the township to be a priority, right? These are, it's a study, it's not anything that is going to put a shovel in the ground tomorrow. It's, it's a plan, it's a planning tool um for the future. And, and that's really what I, I don't know, we tried hard to make the community and the general, the, the public understand that that's what this effort was. I do think a number of them maybe have a harder time understanding that that's what planning does, this is what planning is. And, and that it's not just because it's written in this study doesn't mean that that's what's going to happen. But it is a guide, it's a tool, it's something in place for the township to point to or use as a reference for further projects down the road in the future and planning tools. Um, and, and I don't know, John, feel free to add to that if that um, or, you know, explain it better than I did. Um, but, but that's, that's what this study is. This study is not saying, you know, the township's gonna go build one thirteen or, you know, put sidewalks all in, it's, it's something to refer back to um to see what could be done and what is it that the, the township ultimately wants to have done. And I think the commu, the level of community involvement, I would agree with Natasha, this was, it was pretty evident when we had nearly a hundred people at the first meeting that the message was out. And, you know, we did have a lot of people come and intend and voice their opinion. And I will say that it was an open house format in such that we could have one-on-one conversations with people to get their real comments, right, and thoughts, and document them. We had how many people representing, you know, the township and us to try to make sure we captured everybody's comments that they were giving us at those events.
With the word, just, can we, more of the other people involved? Yeah, I, I appreciate that the report is somewhat long. And it's, it's a lot for professionals to do that. Appreciate residents who aren't involved with planning or other aspects of the township. It might be a lot and difficult. And I, and I think we saw that where people say, why do you, why do you want to make Letterak more walkable, that doesn't make any sense? And then they would, then in the next sentence, say, oh, well, I could walk to a trail on one thirteen. And I would say, well, how are you going to walk then? And they would say, oh, there's all this trip thing, and there's something to be moved, and I would say, okay, well then that's why we're showing you sign. So understanding, um, you know, if we show the Bay Pony Inn, that's a great view. Does, does that, will you want that changed? So I would encourage, if you're talking to community members, to let us know if there are things in there that they and to, and if there's things that they don't like, that they share those details. That makes sense, you know, but it is, it's a lot, um. What? There's a report and an appendix. Um, and the appendix is a lot of documentation.
Yeah, much of that are the, the, the actual data for session.
The sessions, and we have a lot of traffic analysis information in there.
Yeah, I, I would not characterize it as a done deal by any means, far from. Where, where it's kind of sprang from is, we've had a, a trail and sidewalk committee in the township for, I need to say, I guess a couple of weeks.
Almost three, John, I think we're going, and we started in twenty twenty-one.
Okay, and, and the purpose of that was to identify areas where we had gaps in the sidewalk and trail system. And if we could um prioritize those gaps, we, we mapped them all and then prioritized them. And what we've been able to do, and we, we actually have been successful in this, is we can target then certain areas where um where a gap is, is a high priority. Uh, for instance, one might be um fixing a, a gap near a school or fixing a gap near the, the commercial center. So people could actually walk to the store instead of having to get in the car and drive to the store. So we've already been successful with this from the standpoint that we identify these gaps. Because we've done some upfront work, it is ready to pull off the shelf and submit for a grant. And, and it increases your chance of getting the grant tremendously. So this is, quite honestly, just kind of a collection of ideas around the village that yes, if you look at them all together, they form this plan, but um I tend to look at these as, as little pieces, and some of the little pieces actually could be done today. In fact, the, the one, we have already got some grant money for the, the stripe and the bike lines. Uh, another one that could ea- easily be done today would be installing the actual trail alongside the realignment of one thirteen, it's a possibility. So, but, but you have to have your documents in shape and your project defined and ready to go if you want to submit it to somebody, whether it's the state, the county, whoever, for a grant. So that's actually what the purpose is, it's, it's to um hopefully take advantage of all the resources that are out there in terms of financing. And uh, we want to try to get our house in order so that we can get a job with other municipalities when we all go for the same pot line. So that's really where this is from, and I think um uh, it's, it's been eye-opening to, to take a look at this, because I think um McMahon Bowman has, has done a great job of identifying a lot of the issues. And admittedly, yeah, some of them are, are pretty steep hills to try to climb. But if you don't at least try and put your idea out there, you're never. So that's, that's really what this is, is about. And I uh, I came to the first open house, I was out of town for the second one, but I was really pleased with the amount of interest that we had, and we had opinions all over the map. And, and that's fine, it's, it's good that we get people coming out like. So, so keep coming up. And any other questions or comments from the, the public?
Oh.
Phil?
Liz?
Sure.
Say that I don't think there was a single business owner in the village that was in support of the level. Probably the only one that was that remotely interested, and I think we all agree, was the limitation of a concrete island in front of the Bay Pony Inn. And it brought up immediately, I thought, traffic. Happened. Um, also just put the landscape. On the way, but. The comment people, they don't want. That's why they, I think that probably. Other people. Is, is government involved here? Governments could be very. More than what it was. If they, if they get money, they're. Uh. And that's some, some of my concern about. If it does go through in the village. How much of, of that wants to incur when? This. Uh. It should be part of the, the signalization process. As I said, during the government. Um, that, that, uh, bike signal standard. Just from end top of township. That shouldn't have been there. In fact, there were, there were meetings to be attended here. We represented it. We were aware of signals proposed to happen here. And then. I won't wait. The legends. Under a watchful eye. And next thing you know. Year later, without notice. Having construction wise, I had a full form office room. And, uh, I went in. I went there. And I had to come to. Issue. That's my concern. Um, and, and two. They got the light scale. They just. I didn't have time to clean them. And sat there for, for almost two years. I grabbed a seat in front of the door. You know, nobody is. Um, and that's a big concern of town areas. Anyway. You know, I, I sound like you're maybe over there twenty-six years. And, um. My father's happening. And. They tried to get, we tried to get the intersection. And end up, I'm saying, I can't do it, can't do it, can't do it, do it. If you're losing track of it too. And also, and I have a fine bridge from the suburb. That has to be placed. Now. It can be determined by signal one immunity. That's the whole reason why that line is struck around the village level. It, it, it can't be signaled. Now it's signaled. Um, I can, I would be saying. That, that signal has improved traffic there. Wrong road hasn't, has, has, is flowing night. Now I come out to take, take things from Worth Road. Whereas it was discussed, it was Worth Road, one big road. Um, I feel up that course again. Um, but I think it's not actually has, has a really. We're going into your section. Wait next to you. Worth Road, the other way. You know. Maybe one year. So all in all, I, I think the traffic signal has, has worked. Uh, I think one of the things that it did to the board is, is it helped us talk about accidents and so forth. But, but I think a little misleading in terms of the accident, because I believe that we're perfect for all of the chip. It goes by. Free sig. Um, there was only a free dimension of what, what the accident rated in sentencing. I think it, you know, some, some, some mention that, that's wrong. If there's no, no part facts in there as to, you know, I think the only data that should be in there is, is, is. What's the accident rates now since the day. The, the, the intersection that signalifies. Uh, and traffic was there right. Yeah, there's a queue there at Rush Hour. Uh, in fact, there's a queue at Old Worth Road, Rush Hour. Uh, and they greet. And it's, it's, you know, sometimes well, both cars deep. The buyer involved wouldn't have fun to get out because they know it's safe now. And they can, and, and they can. The, the intersection at work. Black theory is, you know. I'm, I'm not, I'm not a part of them. I, I think that was one of the biggest things. When looks out and put that by. The businesses actually have gotten busier because the traffic comes. I'm still down walking the nearest I can care. A lot of people in Bay Pony with them. Especially the piano bar, that is, is, is the same thing. If, 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 if the road was signaled. So it's actually slow people there. The old ones that's deep are the ones that, that, uh. They use the traffic signal as a, um. At the dragster Christmas trip. Uh, as soon as they see that light, they, they ever. The Worth Road, uh, they, they caught four of over eighty-one on the avenue. Coming. Um, so. My concern is bypassed in. Um, it's just going to create more. If you look at the slides in, um, in the. Particularly at Land's Road, um, we, we did. Shareholders, stakeholders. Um, is that it's just kind of, I think that the intersection of that one. What did you do? Then you're probably going to end up with other problems. If you think about this too. Where's that traffic that all the time just goes along the road? Because they don't even get out to. With, with the signal. At, at Lederach. Um. Where's it going to go? They're not going to go in there and make some terms, you know, to get back at the thirteen. We're not moving on route. Next thing you know, you're gonna have a traffic signal down the blue car road. Now we're just paying by the village way. We, 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 we open today again. Look at the, the reasons for the. Three so. The villages, the village career. It was a product reserved open space around. Let her talk that. Um. With the silver horn. Um. With the Schmidt farm. In the Lederach post dead. Um, and you're gonna take it away. Well, thank, thank, thank you for that. I think there are more problems with. I should touch on the country traffic. Um. That's been a problem since. Day one. Bay Pony Inn. This very world. You know, the road made one way there. One of all topics. Um. I, I can go on. But, uh, there are. Other projected improvements that are on private property. Who's gonna pay for one of the big ones? Who's gonna pay for that? Is that my wife too? You know. For whatever. Well, well, I will. Everything. But, well, everybody's welcome. Paying, paying taxes and everything, just like everybody else. So, uh. Major conservator. Who's, who's gonna pay for this? Where are we really walking to? How many people are actually going to use? Um. And, I think it's just stick on the page. Uh, not a big deal. I'm not going to disrupt the traffic. They, they work so hard to get, get it coming out. You know, if we push that button, then change the second five. Um. Were, how many people really were involved in the intersection of red? That's the thing that's dark. Um, I, I mean, obviously, I liked it then, probably maybe I wouldn't have sounded. Um. You can read a useless paper. When that open space is more.
Anyone else from the public? Rick?
Very brief, uh. I, uh, more or less aligned with, with Phil, but not a hundred percent. I, I am in favor of. Pedestrian bicycle circulation for letter. I think that is sorely lacking today. Um, I, I think my family came to Lederach two hundred forty years ago, your Phil's family. Uh, but I've still been there more than sixty. So. My whole life is sort of centered around Lederach. I've lived there almost my entire life. I still live in Lederach. And I work in Lederach. So I have about a point nine mile travel where I live to where I work. You cannot do that safely today. Can't walk or bike my house to get to Lederach. I think that's a little bit of a travesty that you can't. There are no shoulders. There's a lot of traffic and speed. So providing some pedestrian and bicycle circulation, I think would be a tremendous ass. Asset to that part of the township, but really only if it connected it to other parts of the township. But if I can't get to Harley'sville on a bike or on foot. I don't know what the sense in connecting Lederach is. You have to get somewhere else. But man, that would be a great asset if that happened. I would certainly use it. I think it would go both ways. People may come to Lederach. If they're able to get there. I mean, Truman, uh, I forget what it's called, Truman Court, that's behind my office. Could go to the piano bar on foot if there was a trailer. They can't do that today. So there's certainly benefits to be gained. Um. You know, I've got a huge investment in Lederach too, uh, concerned about. And as much as I am in support of pedestrian bicycle safety and ability to get to other parts of the township. Equally opposed to the bypass. See the benefit. I've told my thoughts to both Stephanie and to Natasha. And if you're looking to get somebody through the township as quickly as possible, maybe that's a way to do it. Let's see how that benefits Lower Southford. Um, I don't think it benefits anybody because you're still gonna have bottlenecks on either end of that bypass. But it's true, Lederach and this whole township started out as a Carrarian community. The two farms left in Lederach are the Schmidt Farm behind me and the Slammer Farm. And this would take out one of the two. We don't need another highway, in my opinion. And it's probably gonna be a forty, forty foot wide. A minimum highway. Through a strip of beautiful open space that you could do something very nice with, with a multi-use trail, something else other than just another highway. But the real impact to me is what it'll do to Lederach. If you bypass that traffic around Lederach. Any commercial viability that Lederach has today, just doing them. Uh, is gonna disappear. If you go through Lederach now, it's the least side in front of every, every building. Um, it's tough, you know, office is dead right now. Some retail in, in that little boutique type retail is maybe coming back a little bit. But it's tough to rent space right now. I know that personal experience. And what's gonna happen if you take the traffic off the road? Whatever demand is there for retail is gonna disappear. And it's gonna just turn into apartments residential. Kind of see that happening to some degree in mainland to. Where those apartments are. I think the same thing happened to Lederach, you know. What am I gonna do with it? A big office building that you can't put people in or can't put businesses in. You gotta do something with it. Gonna become residential, I think. Which I don't think is a good. A good end to Lederach. I was there when the village commercial in Lederach. Mainland and Burnfield was passed and one of the goals was to keep the villages viable. To allow these historic buildings to be converted to other uses so they wouldn't be destroyed. I think to some degree that worked. But it really, to me, depends on traffic too. If you're just bypassing the villages, I don't think the village commercial district is gonna be getting good. That's, that's my opinion.
You have anyone? The whole notion of connecting. Lederach. Be a bypass. Is, is quite a majorly missing, has been missing. With all the showing. Correctly, the Lederach can, can part of. That's where the focus.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree with that. One of the, just a couple of thoughts that I have. First of all, this, this whole study and this report is not dependent upon going by. It's, there are many, many parts of it that could be implemented and the bypass never even built or contemplated or exists. So that's, that's one thing. Um, I think that, uh, I, I agree with you that the, the trail connections are really critical. And one of the reasons why we did pursue this study and why we formed the Trail and Sidewalk Committee was. Uh, it, it's much more difficult than people think to get a trail built. You probably had some appreciation of it, Rick. That's the usual because you've been on this. I know my, my work. Trail Committee here and also my work on the County Transportation Authority. Um, it's very, very difficult to get trails built because you need to first and foremost acquire the land. And that's not always, especially in, in the connection between lateral, hardly separate. Uh, and then you've got to be able to actually pay to build the thing. And we don't live in Kansas. We have a lot of ups and downs and. And kind of quirky road geometry and, and things like that that make it very, very expensive. Uh, to do these things. So the, the more of these types of studies that we can do and have out there. Ready to, to grab and be able to apply for grants. That's the goal. We're not, we're not gonna turn around and, and go ask property owners and business owners. To put in the pedestrian improvements. However, what we are gonna do is that when people come in front of us. And they're developing in Lederach, which we have had a significant number of applications recently, for us. Three, four years. Every one of those people asks us for a wave. They go, they say, well, you know, there aren't enough sidewalks. You can't go anywhere. And. This is how you get something started. You can't, and, and it's a lot easier for us to deny the wave. If we can point to a map and say, you know what, this will connect someday. So. You're gonna be on the hook for a side or a trail or whatever the case may be. So that, that's the other purpose in these studies. So I, I do just want to make sure that people understand that this is not necessarily an endorsement of the bypass. Or, um. Any kind of indication that the, the bypass is closer to coming to fruition. This is simply, uh, studying what could happen in Lederach. Without the bypass in place or with the bypass in place. And. I think in a case like this, it's a great example. If you gotta dream big or else you're not gonna get anything. So throw some ideas out there and see what we can come up with.
John.
And, and, yeah, actually, I, I meant to ask everybody else.
I just wanna say, before your two, those speeches, I was thinking it's a no-brainer for a bypass. Get, get around Lederach. Cause I'm the guy going around it, really, right? And to me, it sounds logical and. I'm interesting from Bowman or Steph's perspective. It'd be interesting to understand. I don't think I'll be able to tell like, who is local driving through there? Versus who's coming up from Phoenixville or whatever and heading up to Quakertown or. Or just cutting through, because that's, that's kind of an interesting thing. But I was always a, it's a no-brainer, but we want you said about mainland. Um, it'll be interesting to see what happens to mainland in twenty years. And maybe you're right, it'll be just a hundred percent. Uh, residential. Although the museum is gonna add a lot to it and that's gonna help support mainland, the hotel, mainland inn. Um, it'll be interesting though, what. Um, it'll be interesting though, what you're saying there. Um, so I always even look at a grander scale. Doylestown was bypassed by two oh two and six eleven, and Doylestown couldn't be bigger and happier than ever right now, right? And I'm not saying we're building a Doylestown or even a skip back as might have been suggested. But yeah, it's a county seat and I have lawyers there and stuff like that, but we got Rick in Letterock and you got um, and that's what I'm saying, we're not gonna beat a Doylestown, but I I'm still not a hundred percent. You made me think more about getting rid of it. Um, I am probably one of the largest proponents of trail township. I love trails. And I'm sad that nobody uses them. I would support Letterock being connected to downtown Harley'sville. But I can tell you, my bike's the only one that sits in front of the hotel. Nobody else is riding their bike to the hotel, just me. And I can tell you when I ride my bike to Hennings, there might be one other twelve-year-old kid who parks his bike next to me. There are no adults that ride their bike to Hennings. And I got basket on my bike, so I can do little groceries. And I throw my groceries on the my bat, my bike, and I'll ride home with it. And sometimes, like you're saying, it has to be a destination. That's the purpose of trails. That helps encourage it. There's a destination. My wife and I'll just hop on our bikes. And we can make it from, we live behind Walmart. We can make it all the way to Hennings, ninety-nine percent on trails. It's a it's a hell of a loop, but we can get there. And I'll just get a little smoothie from their smoothie bar there with the other twelve-year-old kids and uh, I'll ride my bike home. But I'm the only adult, and I'd love to see more trails, and I would love to encourage people to use it, but like you're saying, John. Sometimes it's a pretty big hill between me and Letterock.
Oh, yeah.
And 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 when I go up that way and I go up past the cliffs and everything up there at one thirteen, it's a hell of a bike ride to pass that that Rose Cliff and everything. But uh, I'd love to see it. Totally love to see more trails.
For the record, I do walk in.
Okay.
So I mean, I pick my bike. I do walk.
You walk to Hennings?
Oh, to Hennings, no, I thought you meant on the trails, but
Oh, I can trail all the time.
Uh, I drive my mom in Letterock or in Harley's. Yeah, wait, that's Julie, yeah, thanks. Um, and you know, I never moved the car. I walked four miles or walked the heck with the plane while she was there, came back around the lunch and rover home. One of the reasons I think what I use it as a watch is because was a lack of connect.
Yes.
I completed sections trails that were nice. Township wasn't connected and it getting more like that is particularly in Harley'sville. That ranshed down more than Letterock, I think. So I walked miles on Saturday, I passed eight people. At all.
It is more in the spring from fall. I do, I I've got, I've got like a whole series of four to five mile treks using those paths. Um, and uh, but I I don't use them in the winter time. Um, walk in the four miles in my basement. I get nowhere. No, but I'm still walking, but um, I yeah, I I'm not in favor of bypass, never have been. I just don't really see a great reason for it, but there's a lot of things I like in in this. Um, that could be improvements done whether sooner or later. Um, but I agree with your comments about the bypass. I just never quite understood it. Um, but the traffic light has been, has been great. I mean, that's um, when it first, when it first came out, it had some quirks to it and just kinda had to sit for a while. But it's uh, no, I think I think it's fine. I'd much try to go through, but I think go on a bypass through land that would make for a great path. Yeah. As as a biker, the the light has been incredible. It's it's a, it's a big, big strength to just be able to go east to west across there and get across state because that's that's difficult to okay.
The fire board road down the single in Letterock group and down south did right. To disrupt the if we did ask the same question regarding the traffic.
Right.
That's how how we avoid. The only ones ones benefit from bypass are those that are just
Right, and that was me, in all honesty.
Yeah, and I'll put, put a bug in.
Right.
Make them aware that there's something here.
Right.
Go around it.
If I get it in. And there is no measurement, right? Did I assume you can't measure that?
There are ways to take or to get, collect origin and destination information roughly. Um, but we did. We tried to look, we collected counts at key intersections within the study area. And we tried based on those counts to look at patterns. And I think one of the patterns that is prominent today that was somewhat at least maybe surprising to me and surprising as it relates to the bypass is crossroad. That crossroad to one thirteen north is a very prominent movement. And when we looked at that and we said, well, the bypass doesn't address that. I think that that is, you know, one of the, one of the light bulbs anyways that went off in my head going, oh, okay. Cause we were looking at one lane configurations and a whole host of other things, and it it was hard to address that. And other. So.
I would just add though to that, that I know there's been comments about mainland as well. But the crossroad leg and that movement to one thirteen makes Letterock different than mainland. And there will still be volume of traffic on crossroad going to one thirteen through the village. That would not go away. And so we need to look at the fact that this isn't mainland. Mainland doesn't have store road coming out of the backside of it, or you know, it's there's no place to go when you go to that direction for mainland. So it's very hard to say that mainland is like Letterock. Letterock does have those, does have crossroad, it has Southerville Road, and the only way to go to those roads is to go into the village and in and out of the village um, to access those. So that's, that's one of the traffic reasons why Letterock is different than mainland. And the one thing we didn't mention at all here is the volume of truck traffic on one thirteen. And if we have some way or some, and and maybe the alternate route is not the answer, we have to somehow address the volume of truck traffic through the village if you really want to pursue making the village more walkable and connect connected and have some of those other amenities. Because when you're out there and we were out there, when those tractor trailers are coming through and those dump trucks are coming, there is no room. And so if there is some other way, maybe it's, maybe we didn't, we weren't able to fully touch on that. If there's some other way to figure out how to take truck traffic away from that village, I think that could be a benefit to the other aspects of the village and and the users in the village and and that's not saying we're taking all of the volume off of existing one thirteen. Right? We we are, I think we can all, pretty much all agree that if you were to remove all of the 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 volume off of there, that yes, that is no doubt an issue. Um, but if there's some way to mediate the volume of traffic, particularly larger vehicles, um, you know, I think that's that's a question we have to ask and 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 talk further about. When it comes to the alternate route scenario, but as John said, this, this is a study that was not focused on the alternate, on one thirteen. That was just one piece of the puzzle that had to be addressed, whether it happens or doesn't happen.
We did turn into another thing where the getting in and out of the village at at the gateways playing this road and on the particular way, intersections. Um. How difficult it could be, how many turning routes you're gonna have to make. You know, to to get back on the old one thirteen, get into the um.
And I would add, Phil, we haven't, we have not done any analysis to determine what those intersections would look like or what could potentially be there. That would be part of the one thirteen if that were to move ahead, and that would have to all be analyzed. Looking at roundabouts, looking at intersect, like looking at all of the movements. And so that's not what this study was for by any means. We we highlighted those as intersection controls would have to be determined as part of that project if and when that project were ever to move forward through into an engineering phase. Um, so all, PNDOT will require us to look at the gamut of intersection control to make sure that it would operate um, acceptably.
And the, for whatever action we may be taking. So, yeah, the concern about how easy is it gonna be getting the village to Letterock? Um, just looking at the one traffic, the traffic or arrows. The density of arrows, turning rules that are that are happening up the Vanish Road intersection. Um, yeah. That's why I think ultimately the traffic on on crossroads will go down back to where it almost was before. Um, bypass where you wanna make all those turning routes to to impact on the work down one thirteen, um, you know, at Naves Road. And eventually they're gonna, they're gonna find their way down to the Blue Collar Road where it's a clean shot. Or the Red Green is about to visit, visit, take, take volume or the village moving around. Realizing traffic and safe bypasses is really important. In reality, you you can, you can
Okay, well, we'll have to leave it there since we do have some other things in our agenda, but thanks very much, Natasha and Stephanie. Uh, any, any other further pardon comments?
I have wrote up the public engagement plan. You don't do that with a lot of plans.
Yeah.
It's really um, encouraging to see that and that show up in in the in the recommendation plan.
Okay, moving on. Worden and amendments. We got a few things. These are just for discussion only, you know. Restaurant.
Yeah, so to bring that back up because we see the opportunity to take a look at it a little bit further. I even reached out to the neighboring municipalities to talk to them about their parking ordinance, their right on parking ordinance, and whether or not it works for them. And ultimately, what I found is that they the majority of them do not differentiate between like a small cafe or fast food. Sit down. Some of them do, but the majority do not. Also, when you work the numbers, if you, if you took a look at my example, if you actually work the the numbers, it doesn't seem to be much of a difference between one scenario and another scenario. So I think ultimately the takeaway, at least that that I had from all of the research was that we're not far off on the, the acceptable parking that is uh, required and that is actually, turns out to be feasible for municipalities. The the section that I think could have some uh, some additional liberties, I guess, built into the ordinance would be the potential that a smaller restaurant and say that they won't be as many parking spaces as a larger restaurant, like a sit-down restaurant compared to a cafe or advanced food. And right now, our ordinance is not set up to do it that way. Our ordinance is set up to park one per eighty, eighty square feet. And so I think that it is more appropriate because we see that diversity in restaurants out there. And Dave, I think, I think you know better than anybody here, the the multitude of different types of restaurants that exist today in today's uh, um, uh, economy. And I think that if we tried to bake that into our ordinance, I think it might end up being a little too confusing. And based on the research from the adjacent municipalities, it doesn't seem like they're really doing it. And if they are, they're saying fast food or sit down. Um, and it's just a general notion like that. But again, the numbers seem to work out pretty, pretty much equivalent. So I think that long and short of it, um, Skipback Township and Hatfield Township, both park one per fifty with uh, patron use only, right? Not the entire facility and then one per employee. And as you can see with my example, it is around the same number as one per eighty with the entire facility. However, it allows for that flexibility of if you get something like, or a facility, a, a company like Sips and Berries versus a sit-down restaurant like The Mill or Margaritas in Townes and Township. Right? It allows that flexibility to say, well, it's only a cafe. I'm only going to have a couple of employees, maybe three. Why do I need to park all of that? So then maybe they can have a reduced amount as calculated. Or if they wanted to do their fit out to only include a takeout service up front and then have the rest of their about hundred square foot facility, the prep area and kitchen. And so they would only be required to park the patron use plus however many employees they have in the back. It just allows that flexibility.
Yeah, there's a um, on that note, there's um, I'm familiar with Seven Row. It's it's something that it's a, it's a drive-through-only beverage coffee concept that's growing a lot. I just did one in um, Sinking Spring and another one is gonna be coming to Townes and it's a five hundred square foot building. Um, and um, the one I'm doing in Townes is gonna be eleven parking spots. Um, and that's more than they need. Uh, cause they'll have three employees. So they'll need three spots essentially.
And a drive-through lane.
And a drive-through lane, yeah. Um. So that's one where uh, but still, it made me think at one per hundred five spots, even though I probably won't use them, it made me think should there be a minimum because or some sort of flexibility, because if if you just went one per a hundred square feet, it's five spots and even though I know they don't need it, it still seems like they should have more than five spots. Um, but that that's a rarity. I just took a look once we got that and I read through it just to see where certain restaurants and the parking carts were, because they all differ. I represent Burger King, they're right on one per hundred. Their twenty-nine hundred square foot model is twenty-nine spots, their three thousand square foot model is thirty spots, and go up from there, they've got like five models. Um. Casual dining typically needs more than any township requires. Um. Taking out of these, I mean, I can see new opportunities for many, many years, but um, you know, there's six thousand square feet and they require a hundred twenty-five to a hundred fifty spots. Um, and that's because of the bar. That's that's because the evening and weekends, cause it's a full restaurant plus a full bar. Um. One that I just was working on, Promanti Brothers, which is a sports bar more in western Pennsylvania and central Pennsylvania, but they're coming here. That's a fourth, that forty-two hundred square foot. Um. Sports bars like PJ Wheelerhead, but their minimum is is eighty parking spots. Um, so again, they're well beyond anything that we have. Um. And then you get like a if you, if you consider Chick-fil-A fast food. I do, some townships don't because they want them, um, but uh, well over one per hundred. Um, even their drive-through only model is it's three thousand square feet for the drive-through only model, and they require forty parking spots. Um, so my, my point is just that, like So my my point is just that, like, I think most most concepts will require more. Than we will mandate. But um. I think that one per hundred is a good solid. Standard.
Are restaurant structures likely to switch over to other restaurant type uses during their useful life?
Yeah, I mean, everybody, everybody looking for a restaurant wants a second generation restaurant. Because the infrastructure is there. Well, it's gonna be still based on size. I mean, I think the most part, the most part end up being. Because um. Except fast food's gonna be no less than one per hundred square feet. Casual dining is gonna be pretty more, but fast foods. Could typically. Could stay that size, it's gonna typically stay fast food. Uh, typically.
And if I I guess the other thing is, are you anticipating. Uh, outdoor dining, because some of these, you know, so far we're talking about square footage of building. But there are some places that. Really do have significant outdoor dining here.
They do, and right now Arizona is silent to that. An expansion of that red, a restaurant used to include outdoor seating. Does not require additional parking.
Didn't we go through that with Sips and Berries? Because they were gonna put up picnic tables or something? For the summertime use.
I think we talked.
Yeah, I don't know if we ever did hit or came to that.
Why wouldn't, why couldn't we include outdoor seating and square footage?
Well, we can. It's just the way the order. Square footage is based on building area and building defined by four. Well, parking for a restaurant currently in Arizona is just built.
They building and seating. Because that's where you can really get squeezed.
You can, but then it it it's seasonal. Um, in other cases, you know.
You know, you go over to Northside, you can still fuck a table outside.
But you know, that's the problem the mill's going through now. They want to put up that outdoor seating area, where they tore down the building. They're going to the township or, you know, they're going back and forth with parking. There is no parking at the mill.
That's why you, funny you bring that up because in my discussion with Tomentson, that's what they mentioned. The only problem they have in a township is the mill. Because most of the other restaurants, including margaritas across the street, they have. And so and their requirements are high anyway, but then where they're a little bit relaxes with the cafes on the restaurant. And that might have been how the mill got in, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but that is what they mentioned was the the problem that they have. Option and parking for that. So I don't know. I mean, if it if it's not the. Not the um vision of the planning commission to move any sort of parking ordinance amendment through, then you know, we can. Table it for now, but. As you know, this all came about with the two eighty five Maple Avenue. And Sips and Berries, because she had an abnormally large building unit. Right, unit for Sips and Berries to be located within the big building. And she said, I don't know that's parking. Why, it's just a gargantuan kitchen that she has. And so that's that's what generated some of the the thought. Also. There is a severe parking deficiency in Harley'sville. In the village, right? In any one of the four villages that we have. And. And so with both of those kind of active thoughts. You know, we wanted to take a look at it and see whether or not it would be feasible to incorporate some sort of flexibility. In the in the ordinance.
But we don't, we don't distinguish at all in between. Say it's a thousand square foot. Restaurant that has no tables and chairs, because completely takeout. It's still gonna be based on that thousand square feet. The same as one with.
For eighty, right?
With ten tables in it, with.
Yes. So that's why, that's why I was, at least my current thought was to align with Skipback and Hatfield, which is. Parking the patron area, one for fifty, which is steeper than our one for eighty, but it's just the patron area. And then plus the employees.
You redefine patron areas.
Yeah, right, if we have a definition patron area.
If your research didn't show that it helps to break them up into little categories, simpler is always better.
But the the struggle with seasonality then, right? I got a big patio that I use in the summertime, but.
But you gotta plan for the most.
Right.
That's true. You may not have as much indoor planning. If you're using the outdoor venue, you might.
See, but then, and I also go back to. The village commercial, right? The intention of this of this densely populated area. That would hopefully be walkable. You want to encourage people to walk. And they talk about Philadelphia, they're saying we built too many garages so people drive to Philly. Get rid of all the garages in Philly, people take the train down. And it's the same with a village. If you create all these parking spots, people will drive there.
And you can't walk.
You got any thoughts on this, Matt?
Because you could get yourself in real trouble in the village area if you have, if. If the hotel wanted to put a patio in. And we cried more and more spots. Yeah, right, which is good and bad, right?
Well, the mainland inn did add the patio out back. My. I mean, my office was next door for fifteen years and for a long time they didn't have a patio and they added a patio. I don't know how many pavements, I think it was a significant number, right? I'm I'm sorry, man, so they have.
I I was on mute just so not to be interfering. Um, no, I mean, I think you guys have touched on on most of the points and and you know, I. I take Dave's feedback is as pretty telling in terms of, I I think more often than not, we end up over. Uh, over capacity for parking than under. And you know, there's every now and then there's examples where we we miss it and we're short. Um, I will say, you know, at Toments in the mill, you know, we were just there about a week ago and and now that that. Building next door has been torn down and they've been able to add those spots. It's not nearly as bad as it used to be. So. They they weren't off by a lot, but you only have to be off by a few for something to feel over congested and not having sufficient parking.
But that lots intended to be a patio for them. That's why they tore it down. That's what they want. That's what Toments is preventing them from doing. But that's my, and that's my thing. I mean, if you look at Toments, they're trying to create this village. And it it's hard to create a village feel when you have acres of parking lots. Very hard to create a village.
They had a village and it tore it down.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think that's why we've been trying to figure out opportunities to create shared parking. So you know, that that was one of the things that really. Intrigued us about the redevelopment of the bank building in the middle of Harley'sville is. There's there's ample parking there, a sea of parking actually. Um, and and our thought is. That actually allows a bunch of mixed use to go into that site, but it could also provide additional parking. For a lot of the surrounding businesses, you could park in that lot. And walk to a variety of uses in the downtown of Harley'sville without ever having to move your car.
That's actually a component of Skipback's solution to parking is the majority. It was actually said ninety percent, about ninety percent of citizens is in Skipback Township are part of an alliance and association. And they handled those shared parking issues that they have and they they solved them.
Whoever's redeveloping the bank. Right, more than ample parking. How how does that become shared? Like, let's just say the hotel wants to expand and they need more parking spots. How can the who? How does the township facilitate that sharing or how does that, how does that work? Which is kind of like a museum day when they shared space with the church. And you say.
That's, that's different. That that is a private shared parking region, where two people have have an agreement.
So in this case, when he develops it, we'd say, okay, we're gonna take forty of these spots and we're gonna dedicate them to be municipal.
Well, that's that's one of the problems.
Okay, yeah.
Adding buildings.
Reduce parking.
And increase the parking need. It's a little bit of a balancing.
And Scott, I think, you know, in almost every case, and particularly when you get into village commercial. It's really hard for a developer to be able to execute the plan they have within the confines of the land development plan or the uh requirements. So typically that embarks on a conversation with us around, you know, what we're willing to do. And I think that's the perfect opportunity for us to say, hey, we'll we'll work with you on what you're trying to do, but. As a consequence, we really need you to work with us on maybe a cross parking easement or, you know, a single point of access. And just all those things that we're trying to do to try to, you know, eliminate curb cuts, but still create multiple parking opportunities.
Okay. The ace parking like a bear go on Sunday, if anybody needs it.
Put the gate up.
I'll do anything tonight, but maybe if we could um. Just look at some of that, maybe slightly differentiating the smaller guys and then and looking at a. Patron based approach to see. How that would work.
I can look at Radnor Township. I'm just thinking about Eagle Village Shops in Maine. And uh. But whenever a food use would come. Because they've got a few restaurants in there. And I get inquiries all the time, bakery or ice cream or this and that. The first question I have, without saying any of that. How many tables and chairs are you gonna have? And they said one table and one chair. I said, we're at the limit for the township parking. If you don't have any tables and chairs, you can, you can, you're good. But you put up one table that sparks. Some parking garments because you're a food use of the table. And we, and and that shopping center were maxed out. Um, so I I don't, it's not gonna work, but it's related to tables, chairs. Yeah.
Okay, welling unit definition.
Okay, so this this came up um as we've been seeing. Concept plans for um R four in particular on development, R four on development. Namely for eighty eight Harley'sville. It paints the picture of how a mixed. Use. Of development is is appearing and. From the layman's eyes, it appears as if it's a townhouse community. You have three unit town, four unit towns, five unit towns, and I don't know if there are six units or not. But they were all generally speaking townhouses, but in our ordinance, we have. Tripluses, quadruplexes, and then townhouses. And so I think the intent. It appears as if the intent when this ordinance originated. Um, a long time, decades ago, is that. The the tripluses would not take on the look of. Um, a quadruplex and same as a as a townhouse, like a five unit and and up. And so um. That's what. I wanted to start the discussion here, obviously not going into any detail. Um, but the potential to amend our ordinance to. To have duplex, I'm sorry, twins, maybe duplexes. Um, as separate definitions, um, because they generally look different and. And then townhouses, which is three unit towns on up. To however many units and then. Potentially multiplex, right? And and that sort of thing. So so then we actually get a visual. Mix of uses. On the site.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I think I think that everything that we've seen on that site is. They did look like. Townhouse developments, even though you're reading the notes.
And they they.
Refer to the ordinance sections. Yeah. They call them different units, but if we're gonna have mixed wellings, I think you should. I'm sorry. You know, just by looking. So I I think that's probably worth pursuing.
Yes, okay, okay, definitely. So I I guess, why don't you come up with some suggestions?
Okay, okay, I'll take a look at that.
And and seven too, the brick just left too, and I was curious because it brought up a point when he presented. His one unit is seven, he has seven in a row? I think in that plan.
Well, that's either stacked above each. But there's seven footprints.
Right, seventeen foot, fourteen in a building, right? Because that seems extra large. I realized how, he said it's a hundred fifty foot building.
Yeah, but that's the question, that's the maximum.
Okay.
He can do a hundred fifty.
I love to see that brought down. Because it's kind of like saying. But particularly unless we change it, because then you have that. Like, like Matt said, even the back side's gonna look real ugly. He's gonna go pretty up the front a little bit, even though he made the argument of, you know, it has dimension to it. It the back's gonna look super ugly and it. Uh, the drawing goes kind of okay. I don't know what it's gonna look like in reality when you have a hundred and fifty foot of flat space.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, um. And if you're. How visible it will be. I actually was looking at that after we had our building committee. Uh, you do see the daycare, when when you're on sixty three. You're you're going westbound towards Cory Road. Uh, you can't really see that site. Uh, clearly, because what you have is you have the daycare building and behind the daycare building. Along their property, along. Pretty thick road. Everly. Which I believe right there.
I think so. Uh, so so it's kind of limited, but.
But my guts tell on a because they're providing two points of access to that property. For project developed at some point.
Oh, it's right.
Whether it's Brian or somebody else.
I I'm not sure that I. All I'm concerned about. Brakes on the back of a building. I mean, where where I live in Windham Court, the backs are all totally flat. But on the fronts, they have a lot of them. They look fun. It kind of simplifies the structure, but I couldn't see the point.
Future neighbors are gonna. They're not there now.
I suppose so. I mean, in our case, we have neighbors all around. It's because we were a mini built.
Yeah, I I probably. Don't agree with John completely on this one in that, um, you know, I. I will, I don't want to use the daycare as the buffer to not see the back of those homes, because. First of all, that means that the daycare has to look at it and then anything that goes in there in the future is gonna look at it. So. I'd really like to see them just all set those backs a bit. Um, I think it will help if they step it down. So if it's not a hundred and fifty foot of continuous uh ridge. Running down, I think that's just gonna help regardless of whether they even create any offsets off the back. Um, but you know. I'm more worried about the those two buildings than I am the other two. Because I think as you come up the hill hitting west on Summey Town, eventually that will be a fairly visible development.
And and I think we, you, it wouldn't be the we at the time, I think you successfully worked with the. The 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 post office development, because they had larger units originally, like six unit buildings.
Oh, you mean the the one that.
Right, right, didn't they originally like have six unit buildings? Yeah. See, I I I like that. Once I started looking and think, capital, you know, hundred fifty feet, it's seven, seven buildings in a row. That just seemed large to me and I don't know if. You can limit the size if we're gonna go look at ordinance and changing them, like saying, hey, the max of any. Building is X, Y, Z.
One fifty is not considered. It might have one fifty. In many times of two hundred feet.
But then.
Or what you do, the other way to do is do number of units. Then it's up to the developer whether.
Well, that's what's. Right. And you do it that way or or even require it, so yeah, because I think there was, isn't there somewhere to ordinance, there's only so much linear feet of flatness. Is that for a commercial building now or? Isn't there? There's a spec, yeah, there's. Somewhere where there's a certain linear footage that can go where you have to have a. Yeah, some.
I mean, generally breaks are good and. Maybe, maybe as we revisit those definitions, we want.
Yeah.
You know, you could build a mandate break. Uh, the last item under ordinance amendments is stormwater management. I I'm I'm actually gonna. I, I'm, I'm actually gonna hit this one a little early. Because, um, if, if I understand this correctly, the, the problem that is trying to be solved, is allowing some additional impervious coverage allowance for these clustered residential lot. Where, where everything gets maxed out. And then on, on clustered residential lot, nobody has a, um, allocation of impervious cur- coverage that they can, you know, use on their lot. Uh, which is something that probably should be taken care of and thought of, but I think that is, by saying that people must accommodate the maximum amount of impervious on the district, uh, that just seems a little bit misguided in a lot of other districts, especially when it comes to, commercial or, or industrial. I mean, industrial coverage can be very architically, and in reality, what's built out, he doesn't, they, they don't bear that out.
Yeah, this ordinance amendment was, um, generally meant as like a, uh, a placeholder for discussion and it's definitely overkill. Um, but you're absolutely right, well, first of all, it's not gonna be, um, recommended that we, the, uh, amendment that you have in front of you, whereas that is, that's, that's a hundred percent and, the benef- not the benefit, but it would be in the saddle, so technically it could be weighed by the board, but in the sense, and in cases of it, it would be, then you're looking at eighty or so percent of, impervious that you would have to buy stormwater management for in industrial districts. And that's just like you were saying, it's something, but it's trying to, like you, how you've begun your discussion, John, is, it's hitting the nail on the head. Uh, with the cluster developments, they're required to, uh, appropriately plan for the stormwater management that they, that they plan for, for each slot, so they, they have to, plan for a typical size building and then a driveway and sidewalk and a back patio or whatever else component. And then, as long as it's appropriate and acceptable, then plan the stormwater management for that and then add, um, like ten percent or in, in Park Crossing at Southford, it's add another thousand square feet to each lot. So they even have more impervious in the future, so when a homeowner comes in and buys, they can say, well, I want, you know, shed and I want, um, a back patio and I want a pool and stuff like that. And so all of which would be allowed in zoning, but they need that application, so, that's the way the plan was recorded, so it was beautiful. But then the developers start selling all these lots and they say, well, you have, X amount of square footage already baked in for an impervious surface, which includes an, an additional thousand square feet. So some of them said, let's max out the thousand square feet too, let's make the building bigger. And then, so now we're in the case where those homeowners are applying for patio out back. And we're saying, well, you can't because he needs stormwater management. And then, um, first of all, it's a, it's a nightmare because he has to have engineered plants, they have to be reviewed, he has to install stormwater facilities. But the, um, the physical fact of the matter, which hasn't been a hundred percent proven, so I, I'll leave that there. But there's such small lots that I don't think it's even feasible that they can even fit these, of stormwater facilities on the lot, along with whatever they want to do, the patio or shed. Also, or pool, right, also, I think the, the stormwater management facility in this particular development was, maxed out in area also, so I don't think we can go down any further because he has a restricted layers. And I don't think you can go out any further because you have boundaries. And so we're really strapped with this development. Um, so that's what created this ordinance amendment, so, and these be massaged quite a bit. Uh, but that's the goal, that in the future, if we ever do have a scenario, that we allocate appropriate space, um, that the developer construct the appropriate space in stormwater management basins, for, um, use of the residents to, to feasibly or to, to, um, reasonably develop their lots.
Is it, is it more than just storm management though? Um, because what's the reason that everybody at the golf course comes here to get a waiver for a pool or something, right? Okay, that's the zoning for just that place. That was taken out of the ordinance, so that we're not.
Right, but, but it was put in the ordinance at the insistence of the board. I wrote the ordinance.
Also, there, apart from the stormwater management, there are other good reasons not to have excessive impervious surfaces, as, I don't know if that's written into the zoning ordinance. He, he built up in all kinds of reasons not to have just these huge amounts of impervious surface on a small lot. It's not just a storm park. That's probably what is the most easy to control. But to say, you know, we're gonna find a way for you to also be able to build a patio and a terrace and a pool and a hot tub, on this little lot, that's not okay for a lot of reasons, not okay environmentally, it's not okay visually.
And really, I, you bring a good point, matter of fact, that came up in discussion, is forty-five percent in that cluster lot scenario appropriate? Or should it be more like thirty-five percent? Matter of fact, thirty-five percent was the average impervious surface that was designed on the approved plans. And so, and again, it, it included the house and the driveways and sidewalks and the patios and, and everything. Didn't include everything, right, so there's other things potentially due to a lot, but that was, yeah, so that was the average, so, I think, part of this, I think, we'll be able to, amend the ordinance and have part of this be solved, but then another part of it needs to be some sort of a, condition or some vehicle that, that, um, and on the very beginning of the project, when the original, the, the, the first house is constructed, that that lot is appropriately planned to have all the, the, typical allocations for what you would expect to have when you move into a house. You expect to have a patio, you said, I mean, you expect to have a shed. You may or may not expect to have a pool, but just.
But you may expect to expand your house in some way.
Potentially, right, and so to look, um, further than just the initial bill and to make sure that, people aren't strapped and the township isn't strapped, because, you know, this, this is not a good situation where we don't have this allocation for, for the additional impervious surface and, and treatment for stormwater management, and we have to deny, a simple patio application, we have to deny a simple shed application. And, um, we need to look at those.
Yeah, I, I think the, you know, we need to identify when, when this is. You know, another issue when, when a builder comes in and they all have different sized homes, the burden should be figured in the line of its model style. Plus, whatever improvements, but if somebody else chooses small models, great. I was assuming.
Hey, John, I, I, uh, I reflected on this after it came out, and when it, when it first came out, I, I have to say, I was, I was actually very appreciative because I do understand the sentiment, um, that, you know, we shouldn't just look at what is immediately being built, but what would likely be put there. Um, so, so I completely get it. The thing I do worry about, Mike, though, is how do we also protect on the flip side, of not overbuilding stormwater management by anticipating a gross buildout, which is, unlikely to ever happen, so just like we talked about parking and sometimes like we overdo the parking, I, I, and it's very hard, I, I don't profess to have a solution for it right this minute, but I, I do think we should contemplate, something beyond what is immediately proposed, and I like John's example where, hey, you can build a variety of homes, so we should just assume you're gonna build the biggest ones. That, I think that's reasonable, but I don't want to assume that everybody's gonna come in, you know, put in a, a oversized driveway, a patio, like, you, you, you could find yourself grossing up the impervious to a, excessive amount and then building stormwater management well beyond what's ever needed.
Yeah, yeah, that's a very good point, Manis, and, and I think that that's the, that's the, um, complex, uh, question, is what, where do we draw that line, because if, if, um, if the development in Park Crossing was planned for forty-five percent impervious surface, then that would have substantially changed the plans and, according to the design engineer, I, I believe that he said that it's not even possible to do that on the site, because it was just going to be a gargantuan basin or a series of basins. And so I don't think that, you know, a hundred percent design is, is necessarily appropriate either. It's, it's, it's a, um, it's something where, from the enforcement side of things and the appropriateness of proposed, well, uh, permanent applications, to want a patio where you don't have one, um, and to be denied because there's, you need stormwater management, but there's no place to put the stormwater management. Um, and to basically be forced to put in a deck, um, or to want a shed and have the same situation, it's, trying to find a solution for that, the, the painfully common site hindrances.
For very large developments, you can also add a requirement that they not use every inch of property and they put aside some area that could in the future be, additional stormwater. The problem, I mean, the problem is everything gets built out to the inch in these developments, because that's how you make money.
Well, in the cluster development, it kind of benefits the community, because of the open space. Um, but I think that that was part of the argument of, of the design engineer. Uh, I, I didn't speak to them about this particular issue, but from what I hear in the past, what, what they said is that they designed it, to its maximum, which was just around thirty-five percent of the site. And I guess that might have something to do with the balance of permitted density, you know, making it a cluster develop. And kind of balancing the two.
We kind of do the same thing, what you're suggesting there with parking, right, you, you have that reserved parking that, if we determine that in the future, we need more parking spaces, either they're hidden there, we can create them, because it's already, developed, planned for.
Yeah, I mean, there, there is also a logistical issue, a lot of you go after, I, again, we're not gonna solve this tonight.
Yeah.
You know, I think maybe if you just do a little bit more research and, alternative methods, we can, we can.
We might be taking more of the long game with this one, because the, the front center situation is a development that's already structured. So it's, it's not dire right now, so. So, uh, but I just wanted to bring it up and, and.
All right, let's see. Sitting through all this.
I'm, I, I did, I was hoping to have a little bit of a conversation about some of these things, but I'm wondering if maybe, we can have a full conversation.
That, that might be wise, that might be wise, I, I, I did see, uh, you, you gave us a graph, uh, red line graph of the current village ordinance, the way that it was developed.
Uh, yes, it was the one that, um, the solicitor had, had marked up, so it was a clean version that, I highlighted section that I changed after the last round of the testing. And then I also sent around a memo just summarizing some of the points that were brought up at the last meeting and then helped me address them. Um, and then there are a couple items that I was hoping to be able to discuss and, we also, I just, just before this meeting, I was able to send out the, the new, four scenarios from the testing that we say, um, that I would have, I was hoping to have Mike be able to share and then we could go through them and, what they illustrated and some of the points of discussion that are out there. So, perhaps, Mike could distribute those.
We can, it's, because typically, and, and, typically it's always at the last, and I think that that's a disadvantage to moving forward these V C.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, I think maybe if, 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 uh, you're okay with this, Manis, maybe next month, if it's not a real crazy, agenda, we could bump this up a little bit.
Yeah, I think, I, I think that makes sense.
Cause I haven't, did you send them to everybody or just? Maybe if you could send them out to everyone's, that'd be good and then, yeah, I think we probably should put a little bit harder. I apologize for the time, but I, I thought it was important that people have their say in. Okay, anything else, any other business? Oh boy, I didn't, I didn't beat the record. Except for you're getting out before nine o'clock, because it's.
Yeah, because it's an hour late. Thanks, everybody, have a good night.